So I think we got everybody here. So we can reconvene this meeting. And the next item of business is to accept the remainder of the agenda for the evening. Is there a motion to do so, or alternatively, a suggested modification?
Move that we accept the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries unanimously. Next item of business is public comment. Is there anybody from the public here wishing to address the board this evening? Seeing no indication of that, the next item is new staff introductions. I believe there are some this evening.
A trio.
I know. Yes, we have a number of them today. So I'm going to go ahead and do some introductions, and then we'll let them say a few words about their experience so far. But these are all summer interns working here at the Park District. Immediately to my right here is Eric Orda, and he is in planning and operations with his experience. In the center there is Carmelo, how do you say your name?
Gibada.
Gibada. Okay. I'll let him tell you how to pronounce that. And he is working for Tim in landscape architecture and doing some experience there. And on the far end is Minja Son, who's doing an experience in athletics and wellness. So I'll let you go ahead.
All right. I'm Eric. I'm studying at Allegheny College in Meville, Pennsylvania. I'm interested in urban planning, planning in general, like development things, but it's not necessarily offered at my school. I'm studying political science and global health. And so I thought that this would be a great opportunity to kind of hash out my interests and see if it's actually something I'm interested in. So far, I'm liking it.
How did you find us? It's a long way from Allegheny.
I'm actually local here. I live in Urbana. I'm from Urbana. I just had to find my way out for college, so.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Came up through some of the programs with the Park District.
Uh huh.
Eric grew up across from Carl Park, and his folks were involved in the Carl Park master planning and.
Oh, wow.
The Playground Initiative. He's working on doing some strategic plan research for us, and also working with, looking at solar installations in the district.
Awesome. You're the one that's doing that. Great.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carmelo Gibada. I'm from the west side of Chicago. I am a junior here in Urbana, Illinois-Champaign, studying landscape architecture. I guess my interest grew within the design aspect of this, and it just evolved from there, learning new things, how it works. I feel like landscape architecture is just an opportunity to really put your mark in something, and it's something I would like to do, and I hope to build some connections here, and really develop some skills that will really benefit along the way.
Carmelo was one of my students last fall in environmental site analysis, so obviously we got a chance to talk, and did superlative work, and was really interested in getting some experience. And he was going to be here for the summer.
Oh, great.
So that's often hard, because sometimes people have to go home and, you know, live at home or work.
Right.
So he was able to stay here, and so it's a good fit. We're working on a couple of downtown things, downtown connectivity. Got some opportunities to get Leo Park connected, maybe a side trail concept from downtown to Carl. Certainly Crystal Lake is our destination, the goal, and I think we're going to be the ones to show that that can be done. Obviously, the University Avenue road project will kind of be right in between there, so it's really kind of convergence of really four different projects or needs coming together, and so we can focus them on that, and I think it'll be good for all of us.
Yeah, it'll certainly be it.
And I think landscape architecture has a lot to offer to park districts, and I think Tim's leadership and being in landscape architecture has really helped form this park district and made us look much prettier in a lot of ways than we would without a landscape architect.
Hi, my name is Minja, and I'm from Korea, South Korea, and I just graduated from University of Illinois. I majored in sports management. And I got to know about Urbana Park District because during the school years, I was the president of one of the student organization. It was a Korean soccer association, so we hosted tournaments and leagues, and then Brooklyn Stream was the place that we usually had our leagues and tournaments. So I got to know about it, and I already knew Kyle, so I got to contact with Steph there. And currently, I'm doing, I've been planning for pop-ups sports, which is.
Oh, good.
Providing opportunities to underserved people in Urbana with sports. So we did it, we started it yesterday, and many people appeared, so.
How many is many?
It was 16, but it was pickleball, and we, yeah, so they were all passionate about it, but tomorrow we will have a second session and hope many people appear. And if not, then we can improve and marketize better. So I'm looking forward to learning a lot of things that I couldn't learn in school by this intern.
Yeah, real life will teach you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the pop-up plays are something new that Andy and his staff started working on once we got the underserved study, and quick things that we could start now as we analyze the rest of the report. So he's got Minja and Paul, right? Another intern that is putting the program together. It'll be a pilot, we'll be trying, see what things work, what doesn't work. Like the pickleball, for example, definitely led itself to Blair, but there's other activities. There'll be some things in Crestview, there's some things over King, so they'll be moving around as well, but it's more of a pilot to see, you know, if there's interest, and you guys worked with the marketing department to get a flyer made, and we're working on getting that to residents in the different areas, so it's a new program.
So you have a really interesting challenge, since we haven't, it's not falling into, it's not learning how we do things, you're kind of setting the path for us. That's good. Welcome aboard.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a great summer.
Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Yes, thank you.
It's great to meet you.
Thanks, guys.
Likewise. Thank you, guys.
Moving on to the UPDAC report, we have a written report in our packet this evening. I don't know if there's anything anybody wants to add to that.
It was an interesting meeting. The UPDAC wasn't as, they didn't ask as many questions as I thought they would. It wasn't that they were dismissing it, but I was surprised that they didn't ask more questions, but it was a good presentation.
Just for, there were a couple that contacted me afterwards.
Oh, yeah.
Very interested, and getting into a whole lot of discussion. One, I forget which, I talked to a couple of them, but one of them actually sent me an email asking if they'd be involved in the prep for new programming ideas and those kinds of things. And we absolutely said yes.
Yes, yeah.
As we get through it and start working through some, the big highlights of what we need to do and what we can do, then we'll definitely be working with UPDAC.
Yeah, it was a good presentation, as usual.
Okay, let's move on then to our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda this evening, our approval of minutes from the May 2 board study session, the May 9 regular board meeting, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, the receipt of the normal monthly reports from administration, planning and operations and recreation, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and lastly, action on ordinance 2017-05, the prevailing wage ordinance, which we are required to pass as it is presented by state law. So, under our rules, any of these items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any single commissioners. Is there any item anyone would like removed from the consent agenda for separate action and discussion? Seeing no indication of that, is there a motion that we approve these items on the consent agenda in an omnibus fashion?
I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
Well, it was kind of a tie.
We need buzzers.
They buzzers, yeah. That's been moved and seconded, and also under the rules of the consent agenda, there's to be no further discussion, and we'll move directly to a rule called vote, beginning to the left with LaShonda. Oh, I'm sorry, I caught you with a mouthful.
Sorry.
Let's start at the right with Bob.
Too fast.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And that carries with a unanimous vote by the five commissioners present.
He was tricking one, I wonder.
Okay, that's moving right along to the financial reports, which are a little different this month.
All right, tonight I'll be discussing with you the performance of the Park District for May. And of course, this is very early in our fiscal year to be making any real analysis. We're only one month in. The fund balance report was not presented this month and won't be presented next month, and that's because during the months of June and July, we're still booking payables back into the previous fiscal year, so it wouldn't be a very accurate representation of that report to present it until the, until really we've had our audit and determined that there's no more payables to book, and then that report will come back in August once the budget's approved by the board, because the budget column in that report also could possibly be inaccurate. So it's just best to wait on that one until we have a little bit more history to go on. So the first report that I'll be discussing tonight is the Budget Analysis with History Report. This report shows a historical comparison of the one-month period of the current year and the prior three years. So one month is 8%, which is a number you can use to compare to throughout the report. The first section of this report is all funds district-wide, and if you go to the middle of page two, you can see for this one-month period, our total revenues and transfers in were $2,013,000. Our first property taxes were received in May, and that was about 25% of our total extension was received with the first payment in May, and we'll expect about that same amount again with the June payment that we'll receive probably this week. So by the end of June, we'll probably be 50% in for our property tax receipts already, which is a good start to the year. You can also see on page three that our expenditures for this period were $493,000, and we have a surplus at the end of May of $1,519,000. And following that are the reports for the general fund, recreation fund, museum fund, and indoor pool that are summarized in the district-wide version. The next report I'll discuss is the Treasurers' Report. The Treasurers' Report is the report of the amount of cash that the district has on one day, May 31, 2017. Currently, all 25 funds are listed, but I realized that actually the James Fund is zeroed out, and so I'm going to remove that going into, I'm not even gonna, it's not even in the budget for next year, so, for FY '18. So next month, there will only be 24 funds to discuss, and I, that was kind of, I just noticed it when I was reviewing this report to discuss, and I said, oh, I should have taken that one off. So that'll go away. But anyway, this report lists where all of the cash is invested in the district for a grand total of $9,965,064.96. Page two lists the amount, the top section lists the amount we have in interest-bearing accounts. So of the $9,965,000 on hand, $8,617 is out in investments. If you recall, last month, we had about $1 million of CDs invested with BUCI Investment Services, and I worked with them just this week on Monday, yesterday, to invest 1.2 million. So I was able to increase our investments with BUCI for mostly amounts that we have in fund balances that we're not intending to spend in the coming fiscal year. So those are all going into CDs. They invested at much higher rates than last year, so I'm really pleased. And those amounts, so the total amount of investments won't particularly change because the dollars are going from Chase Savings, which is already an interest-bearing account, but they're going into investments with BUCI Investment Services. So that'll be a change you'll see next month's report, you can look forward to, but it was kind of an exciting moment of my week to get to meet with BUCI and pick CDs, and it was kind of fun, getting to know our banker there, and, you know, it was, it's really only our second year doing that. We just started doing that last year with the dollars that we had on hand and fund balances that we wanted to increase our investments with BUCI, so kind of increase our relationship The next section of this report lists disbursements. So the disbursements listed here of the $672,000, that represents all of the cash that went out in May, but it was attributed not just to May's expenses, but also to FY '17 expenses that were still outstanding. So May's expenses were actually just that $493,000 that was in the previous report we just looked at, so the rest, the difference, was all attributed to last fiscal year. But those are summarized here altogether, so if you were to take the totals from the four accounts payable reports that you received in this month's packet, that equals the $617,000. Or 672. Sorry, I said that wrong. And finally, the last section lists inter-fund loans, and I did want to point out that there was a change to this schedule as well, in that the indoor pool is really short on cash at the end of the fiscal year until the school district pays their portion. So I increased a loan from the recreation fund to the indoor pool, which is something that has historically been done at this point in the year when needed. It's not always needed, but it was this year. So as soon as the last fiscal year's payments are finalized, then that will go away. So probably by the end of June, that should be gone already. It may just be the only month you see that. But I just wanted to identify that as a change. And if you don't have any questions, I'd like to present the Treasurers' Report to you for approval.
I move we accept the Treasurers' Report for audit. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously.
And the next report I'll discuss briefly is the Supplemental Report of Cash. So this report has the same information as the first page of the Treasurers' Report. However, it groups the information by expected use rather than by fund, and the uses are daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations. So you can see of that same total of $9,965,000, $1,420 is restricted obligations, leaving $8,545 available for spending. And the final report I'd like to discuss are the changes and highlights from the capital budgets. So the areas with asterisks are where there's been spending or activity this period, and you, you'll notice there are asterisks actually in two columns for this particular report because of the activity from the prior fiscal year as we continue to pay payables. So there's April activity and May activity. And so in the 2017 capital budget, revenues were received from proceeds from the Auction Commission of the Skid steer, and expenditures occurred on mechanical replacements at PRC and on the Avant lift. And FY '17 expenditures were booked for memorials, recreation, small equipment, the 901 demolition progress, and trees at Crystal Lake Park. In the 2016 capital budget this month, expenditures occurred on memorials, construction crew projects, operations, small equipment, and the FY '17 expenditures were booked for ADA projects, memorials, Crystal Lake improvements, and retainage was paid out on the Hickman Wildflower Walk project. And finally, in the 2015 capital budget, FY '17 payables were expensed for memorials, sediment basin projects, nature play, the rain garden project, the Larson Tennis Court, and stream bed repairs. Kaitlin was really busy. And now I think Kaitlin and Derek will have some updates for you on capital projects.
Yes, definitely. Yeah, we had a lot going on between April and May that we were working on getting sorted for the end of the fiscal year, but I think we did a pretty good job of it. In the last month, we have made a lot of progress on a number of capital projects, and that includes the Larson Tennis Court. We've had a number of inquiries, I won't say complaints exactly, a number of inquiries confirming that we were not removing the tennis court, and so I very, I very carefully reassured everyone, no, 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 we're making it better, we promise. And actually, so we've been working with cross-construction on that, and they did a fantastic job finding drainage issues on the tennis courts and fixing them, hopefully, hopefully fixing them, because the real issues that were happening on that court were cracking and water seepage over the winter and when it rained, and we knew that drainage was very challenged. But there's, there's times at which you can't necessarily tell what's going on exactly until you just break open the ground and see what the conditions are, and so, so they did a lot of work to try to reestablish positive drainage, the court surfacing. Well, so they laid down an initial asphalt layer, which is gorgeous. If it, when it rains, which it did rain a lot at the beginning of May, when it rains, it's dry in 30 minutes. All of the water is off of it, and there's no pooling on it, so we're very pleased with that. It took a month to cure, though. You needed to let the asphalt cure for a month before you could put the tennis surfacing on it. So that is actually scheduled to start on Thursday and continue through next week, after which there will be brand-new fencing put up around the tennis court. So we're very excited about that. Hopefully, in the next two weeks, we'll have people back playing on that court. So fingers crossed, and like I said, very, very happy with the work that's taken place there so far. Similarly, incredibly pleased with Miller Enterprises on the 901 demolition, that they ended up reusing or recycling the vast majority of that building. There's actually somebody in Ohio who bought most of the structure from them. So, so it was shipped off to Ohio, and like I said, just that, that nice, nice reuse that somebody is getting some purpose out of it. But we are thrilled taking a look at that open space now that the, now that the building's gone. It looks, it begs for picnic tables and a couple of trees planted in it, so, so we're looking forward to that. We probably just slightly missed the window on the grass seeding, unfortunately, getting pushed back by a couple of rain delays, and so it's likely that we'll have to come back and seed, grass seed again in the fall. But for now, we're going to leave the, some fencing up to try to help grass establish if it can, probably not in this heat, but if we do get a little relief from that and some rain in the next couple of weeks, there's the possibility, so, so we'll keep an eye on it. The bio swales up at the Anita Purpose Nature Center, I think as we reported before, all of our native plant nurseries have kind of struggled with the unusual spring weather, with the enormous amount of rain and then bone-dry conditions we've had in the last couple of weeks. They've had very mismatched growth seasons, depending on the species, and so we were waiting on a couple of plants, some butterfly milkweed, some pale purple cone flower, a couple other things, which were delivered and installed on Monday. So we're very pleased with that. They are also seeing some inconsistencies with the sedge planting in the middle of that, though, and so we are working closely with them to see what we can do over the next year of maintenance to, to probably reseed a lot of that sedge mix. So, you know, we and NCAP, the contractors, are very dedicated to this being a successful project, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep at it and make sure, especially since it's IDNR money and remediation funds, that we're gonna make sure that it's used well and has a good product at the end of the day.
I think the extremes of weather there, too, are impacting that seeding. We had good germination initially, and a lot of it's just sort of dried up, and they're attempting to water it at this point, but it might, as Kaitlin said, they're committed to reseed it if they need to.
The plants that they installed, though, around the outlets and up at the caps, they look wonderful, and we are putting up some fencing to make sure that people don't drive over them, or at least some roping around the edges.
I saw a troop of small children going through, like a, like a pack of dogs, just not.
We put signs up today.
I just wanted to leap out of my car.
I forwarded your note, yeah.
I could use them for the dandelions in my yard.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, those little sort of popsicle stick signs were up all over, and the kids are just walking through knocking them over, and the mother's just.
I watched these adults walk right through.
Yeah, I suppose it's not just kids. Yeah, that was just my, it was, it was disheartening, is what, is what it was, because I thought, you know, how unobservant people are that they can't.
Pretty.
Yeah, I mean, you know, anyway, I could go on.
The signs effect should help, hopefully.
Good. Otherwise, I'd bring a dog.
Similarly, the nature playscape, we're supposed to get about 1,000 plant plugs to go into the playscape, and those are delayed as well, and we're actually thinking that at this point, we'll plant them in the fall, so Pisa was going to be holding on to them. And actually, you know, there's some ways in which that's convenient. This is a really tough time on our landscaping crew to make sure that all of our annual beds go in on time, and especially right now, are watered. But, but also, you know, this gives us six months to see how kids are playing on it, and where kind of the usage patterns are, and where could use some plants and some beautification. So we'll do that in the fall, in September and October, probably.
Is there any grass left on the, I think of it as the Billy Goat Gruff Bridge there.
Not, not a lot in the middle.
Right, right.
But there, there is actually some good establishment on the sides of it where there's fewer kids running, and while it was still a little cooler, actually, there was good establishment of grass just in the kind of that center area where we've left everything open so that kids can play and manipulate things, and there was some good establishment of grass in those sections, so I haven't seen it in like the last week or so. So again, those dry conditions, I'm not sure how it's holding up, but it is very shaded.
When I go by, and if there's anybody in there, I almost always see them dancing on top of that.
They love it. They wanted a hill, and that tunnel, that is their hill.
It is, yeah.
I'll mention, that was one of the contributions of UPDAC, actually. Jamie, when we did our tours, saw lots of tunnels, and we were, we were not convinced that we wanted one. We felt like the introduction of manufactured materials was something that we were concerned about, but he reminded us that it was something that we saw a lot of and that was very popular and.
And Becky Nead.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Those examples were.
Good, good, yeah, because it's, it's obviously very popular. I mean, I've seen a variety of things dragged into the tunnel and blocking up one end of the tunnel. I mean, it's just, it's so much fun to go and see what the latest play has produced over there.
We agree. It's really amazing to watch. We'll hear a little bit more about this later in the meeting, but we've made some progress on our Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant. We're actually going to have the engineering to present to you guys tonight, so we're really excited about that and progress forward, and, and just some of the information that we found as we talked to engineering firms about how challenging the ITEP grant can be, and a very, very illuminating process, like I said, that we'll, we'll tell you a little bit about soon. And then out at Crystal Lake, some good progress. What we really hope is that we'll be bringing engineering services proposals in front of you in July. I know you hear that every month, that we're going to see it next month, but this time, I've been very firm. I only have one month left, so it's gotta be next month. I'm, I've gotta put this in a good place for everybody, so. We're also doing a full-day charrette on the lake house on Monday, which Smith Group JJR is going to be leading, so we're going to be getting into a higher level of conceptual design and integration with the rest of the plans that we've made so far about where trails should go, public use, water access, boating, really taking an intensive look at the lake house specifically to see how it's going to, kind of what the new life of the lake house is going to be. So, those are my updates, and we'll have a couple more things, like I said, later in the meeting.
Who will participate in the charrette?
So it's mostly going to be internal staff, because we did already do.
UPDAC.
UpDAC, we did the SWAT with UPDAC, and we did a SWAT with a larger staff group. So this is going to be Tim, Derek, Corky, myself, Cara, Janet.
Oh, yes.
And Shane and Keith from a materials and maintenance perspective, and then Chris Billing from Burns, Clancy &amp; Associates is going to be joining us as well. So, should be, should be a good day. I think we're going to have some really excellent ideas come out of that meeting. And Smith Group has been very, has been exceptional at transforming all of the ideas that we tend to spew out into something practical and beautiful.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they've been on, I mean, they've been working with us on the park for a long, for a long time, since the master plan at least, so.
Yeah.
I think they know it well, which makes a big difference, I think.
Eleven years.
Yeah, yeah.
Just mentioned, it's with a heavy heart that we've begun doing project manager interviews this week. As Caitlin has referenced, she's moving on, and I'll let her talk more about the details of our move, but the good news is we've had some very highly qualified applicants, both internal and external, and it's going to be a tough decision. We're still in the process of interviewing, so we're eager to see what the rest of the candidate pool looks like, but a good group of folks that are interested in working for us.
Yeah, it'd be too long a commute, wouldn't it?
It would be, yeah, a four-hour commute might be a little bit. But so, so my husband accepted a visiting assistant professorship at CoCollege in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and my last day is August 4. So July will be my last board meeting. I should be at the August study session, fingers crossed, but as Derek said, we've just have kind of an amazing pool of applicants to this position. I've said that I'm kind of intimidated by their quality, and I have the job, so, so I really think that the district is going to be in excellent hands with whoever the committee selects. selects and I should have about three weeks of overlap with them to at least get them on their feet, so.
Remind me of what your experience was when you started this job, because it was, I mean, you were at the nature center, right?
I was, so I have a, I have a master's degree in museum studies, which I always say is kind of like a nonprofit degree that talks about buildings, too, because Derek, in my three-month interview, I always joke, asked, you know, "Did you ever think you were gonna deal with HVAC systems?" And I was like, "Yeah, what do you think collections need?" Like, museum collections are based on how much, what your HVAC system is doing, so, you know, I already had that background kind of in strategic planning and budgeting and community engagement and what I had to learn when I came to the job was construction materials.
Yeah, which is no small, no small thing, it's a lot to learn.
There were courses at Parkland in the construction, design and management track that I ended up taking and that was very, very helpful to me. So, you know, I think that a lot of it comes down to loving the projects that you're working on, loving the park district, loving the community here. And, you know, just knowing that you're serving and working with this team of people who have such integrity and who care as much as you do about everything that's going on and making sure that things are done right and done well for the benefit of everyone, so. I'm getting ahead of myself. I was gonna give this whole speech at the August study session and now I've just given it, so. But, yeah, so it's a bittersweet moment for me. If it was just my decision, I wouldn't be leaving, but, you know, gotta stick with my family and, as I said earlier, I already accepted a position at the National Czech and Slovak Museum and Library today, actually, so I'm gonna be their administrative assistant doing help with development and coordinating a national and sometimes international board and advisory group.
And if they need help on their parking lot, you'll be ready.
Just send any plans my way and I'll help, so, yeah.
Well, they're lucky to have you, I'll say that.
Thanks.
Thank you for everything.
It's been my pleasure, really.
You have to say that in August, too.
I know, I will. So, yes, well, thank you, guys, especially for all the trust you've put in me in the last three years and I'm not gone yet, so.
All right.
All righty. That was covering a lot. Move on to the executive director's report.
Sure. Well, we're in full summer swing. I'm sure you've all been out in the parks and seen all the activity and really excited and everyone's having a good time. I think things are going well for today, so on with a couple of updates. CC First, that's Champaign County First, that's our kind of local, broad-based, agency participating group that's really working on high-critical key projects in our countywide area. It's led primarily by the chamber staff, just came back from the Washington DC trip. Obviously, the report was, it's gotten better every year. I think it's about our fourth year of making a real concerted effort to get to Washington and Springfield to lobby for, you know, really critical projects. Obviously, the report was a little disheartening because things are not totally solid in DC. It's always, as you would imagine, who do you, how do you talk to the right people and can they actually help you or do they deflect you and, you know, kind of not get you on track? I think some of the ideas for next year were that we need to take a more diverse group. I think the idea is that things are moving in different directions in the DC area and so the idea is, I'm trying to use the right words, maybe there's a variety of project opportunities that if you bring the right people and the discussions get going, there may be some synergy instead of going in with a sort of a bullet-pointed list of we gotta have or get done and then if you don't make that connection, you know, is there an alternative? So I think that's an interesting thing we're gonna work on over this next year and get ready for next year. Springfield, obviously, has its challenges, too. We're encouraging everybody to participate at that level. Obviously, with no state budget, it's kind of a frustrating time because while there can be excitement and ideas and things that might help us, getting it done and the follow-through is certainly the missing link. So we need to keep trying, keep doing what we're doing. I think we're getting better, we're getting more organized. I do think we have some, potentially some interesting projects through the park districts and forest preserve we should be promoting also, both for DC and Springfield as it relates to transportation and facilities, so we'll keep working on that. Went to a wonderful meeting, Corky and I attended the immigration forum, had sort of a, kind of a meeting partnership and a training session, encouraging all of us to get active with the Welcome Week, which is a national week of celebrating people from other places. It's September 17th through the 23rd. And as it happened, it wouldn't surprise any of you, there were a number of Urbana groups there and we were able to connect actually at the meeting with the school district and Urbana Free Library. I think we're gonna collaborate together and one of the, one of the comments, which you can imagine is true and would be a concern, somebody asked, "Hey, this is a great thing. We do a really neat thing for a week, but then after that week, what happens?" And so we all got our wheels going and thought, if we all could partner, could we offer something throughout the year that would be of interest or... And again, I think we're encouraged to think both big and small. Small can work also, so you don't need huge dollars. I think example the school district has done is they've had the administrators have a soccer game with some of the soccer participants, often a lot of Hispanic adults. The parents will come out and play soccer, so again, it wouldn't be a high-cost thing, it'd just be a lot of fun, but it's a way to break down that barrier and have a real, real conversation. So we're gonna be getting together and talking about what we can get done in Urbana. And I think it's a very collaborative group, there could be other spinoffs and opportunities, so just kind of energizing to be with a group of people that are trying to reach out, make connections, make people feel welcome. Again, for our tagline, "You Belong Here," it's a perfect fit and we're excited about that. Had a great meeting with the East Central Illinois Archery Club meeting last, late last week. We're winding down or ending our last five-year lease agreement and so we're reviewing the terms. The group just loves being out there, so we're gonna probably make a few recommendations on the lease agreement. Obviously, we have a new attorney with Matt, so we'll want Matt to review it and get that into shape. Long-term, we did discuss, you know, what's the future, obviously, as the Perkins Road site continues to get restored, we've got the Weber Park next to it. I think it's really a little, further down the road, we don't know, but we did suggest to the group that, you know, there could come a time where we have to think about the whole site and is that the best arrangement? So I think they're open to that. Obviously, they like that site, but there could be some other opportunities, so we wanna take this next five years to sort of, you know, investigate that. Good news, the club likes working with our staff, our staff likes working with them. It's a good fit, they're very responsive to any concerns. I think we have a number of projects we're gonna look at, too. I know Derek's suggested they could take our new equipment, maybe clear some of the honeysuckle, good way for us to practice, good way to clear some things out. Maybe working on the front appearance a little more, making sure maybe some of that stuff gets cut back and so that when you go to the dog park, it looks more like a continuous site and that it's, you know, has a little more street presence there. I think Corky talked about programming opportunities, increasing opportunities for archery for kids, you know, to get involved, so I think they're responsive to that as well. They are dependent on available people, that can be instructors, so they're limited. You know, it's a smaller club or like any club, the key organizers, usually there's a small network of people, but that was all very, very positive, so we'll be working on that, probably bringing Elise back to you shortly. Let's see, moving along, I think Nancy mentioned already the May UpDak with the underrepresented report. Again, we think it's really critical, it's probably gonna be a new focus of the district, so we'll keep working on that. We had a wonderful presentation that our staff organized titled "Transforming Urbana" and we hosted in this room. We had a variety of people to come and listen about the KRT and Weaver Park and what we're doing at Crystal Lake Park. Kind of wanted to do a little, I called it a think tank, but get people that we know, people that have, you know, served on boards, have worked here, worked other places, to kind of hear our story and offer suggestions. It was a very wonderful dialogue. I think staff did a fantastic job. Forest Preserve and the park district staff did an excellent job presenting both projects. We had a Q&amp;A time for each project after. I think it created a lot of excitement and synergy. Mayor Marlin was able to join us, so she got a good chance to get updated on both of those initiatives and working together. I think one of the crests I wanted to mention, I brought up at the foundation meeting and I think it was recommended, we talked to our board about it, but Dan Olson had asked me if it would be possible for, would we consider to have our Urbana Parks Foundation work with the Forest Preserve Foundation so that we could accept gifts, work cooperatively, whether it's something that happens at Weaver Park, somewhere along the KRT, as an opportunity to, you know, encourage, probably I think of us and think of our opportunities or maybe a number of Urbana residents that would be interested in that project. It seemed odd to staff that, you know, some recognition might be in Mohammed or at a headquarters somewhere. Could the idea of Weaver Park be a gateway entry into Urbana or out of Urbana and also have amenities or recognitions? You know, we're not, not sure what they'll all be, but work collaboratively. If gifts come, is there a way to cooperatively work that? And so the foundation response, I think, was we would do whatever the park board asked us to do, so we don't need to decide that necessarily tonight. But, and again, I'm not even sure how formal it needs to be, probably some formal action if we're actually working together and messaging, you know, to attract people, but certainly at the staff level, we're already cooperating and, you know, collaborating on the project, so it makes a lot of sense to us. So we'll probably come back with some more specifics later on, on that. Keep moving, we had a terrific event out at Meadowbrook, the Uncorked Urbana Wine Festival was a partnership with the Urbana Business Association, Urbana Park District, and there was one other partner. I know on the flyer, it's just escaping me right now, but terrific turnout. I think Corky, Derek and I went out after, we had a full Saturday of site visits, but just see how things were going and I think there was probably thirteen hundred people that had already been there and that was, what, seven, seven-thirty? Seven-ish? And other people were telling us, there's more coming, 'cause it's going till ten o'clock, so Paris is probably working on numbers. She was also in our group on the transforming Urbana, so trying to find ways to work more with the business association.
Those kind of numbers compare again with strawberry jam and...
Strawberry jam's about two thousand.
Yeah, two thousand, right.
I mean, it's getting up there.
It is. They were able to use the U of I Forest Street parking area, the grass parking, so fortunately the weather was good, you know, it's always a concern. Meadowbrook's a great park, awesome site to be at, but it does have a few limitations as far as, you know, parking, what we would call direct parking. I think the longer-term hope or next year's plan is to see if we can get to Crystal Lake Park, but we also recognize we'll have some projects and work going on at Crystal Lake Park, so we'll have to work through that, but clearly there's an interest, it's a good fit for us, it's the kind of event, I think, that works well in a park. Previously, it was done at Bucie Bank in their open parking lot on the asphalt side and it's just very difficult for me to imagine that, you know, because it's not a, you know, it's a parking lot and while it's an open space, probably not real shady and doesn't lend itself to sitting and lingering. So we heard a lot of positive comments, there were a couple of food trucks, I mean, it was... Anything else you guys want to mention that...
No, just all of them, everybody I talked to was...
I imagine the barn was a pretty...
Actually, and that...
The barn was a nice setup.
Worked the way they collected money and, you know, traded tickets and all that, but I think we were talking, the three of us, we saw an audience that we don't penetrate, that we don't reach, that aren't, I mean, it's sort of kind of our age ranges in this room here that don't sign up, you know, they're not in the programs we offer every, every time, so I'm excited about that, just, you know, another connection. The music was good and they had food demonstrations, so it was really very, very, it was fun. It was a great, great setup, so.
I just wanted to monitor if we, if construction requires we return it next year, if that's, you know, just for the preference, because it is a beautiful location.
It is.
Parking could become a challenge at some point. When we arrived, seventy to eighty percent of the grass lot was full and once that's full, they were not able to secure permission at the church, which is where we would ordinarily park for strawberry jam, so there would be some real limitations, but it worked beautifully this last weekend. It was just a gorgeous event.
Is that because of that involved alcohol at the church and so...
Yes, yes.
But if people parked there and just walked across, the church wasn't gonna, I mean, they just didn't...
We asked, we asked them to, you know, get permission and I think that's...
Well, sure, right, that's, yeah, yeah.
I think the challenge there is we're listed as a sponsor of the event, so they show up and they see a bunch of cars there and then what are they gonna do for us in the future?
Right, of course, right, and that guy, isn't the guy from that church just...
We just awarded a community service award last month or in May, I think, on that.
That's one thing, if people actually park in the church, it's out of habit, but if we tell them to park at the church...
Oh, yeah, yes, exactly, right. But if people had, there wouldn't have been, I mean, without any encouragement, that would have, you know, we don't want to encourage that since they didn't want them there, but, yeah.
I think I'm telling my Saturday events backwards, but the three of us also went out to the BMX course out in Farmer City. As you know, the Champaign County Fairgrounds is considering working with Illini BMX to locate a track there and very different park out there, I think it's South Park. Is that the right name? Yeah, it sounds like the TV show. But, you know, Farmer City's a much smaller community, it was sort of an edge park that was up against a stream corridor, so it's buffered, I guess is the word, but it really was a very positive experience. They have a, you know, real family atmosphere, it's a lot of kids and families, you know, it's a little dusty and, you know, they do have some music and announcers and things. We didn't stay for the actual meets, we went out, or the races, went, just prior to that, met with the groups that organize it and got a tour and I think, you know, probably for the fairgrounds, it's a reasonable thing to add there and I think it could attract, again, a different group that we're not directly serving, there could be an opportunity to, you know, tie in or feed in on that, so we'll see how that continues.
Do you have a sense of how the, how noisy it would be, how much of it is...
It wasn't terribly noisy.
It really wasn't terribly noisy there. Again, it's edge park kind of a thing, but I don't know, Corky was saying, with the music at the Crystal Lake Pool, I don't know if you would hear it if it's at the level that we heard it, you know, certainly if they bring in twenty speakers and there's, you know, ten thousand people there, you know, that, but I don't think that's the scale that's realistic. There were probably...
And how much dust was it kicking up? I mean, we're located just...
They were actually watering it down.
Yeah, they water it during the meets, sorry, race, I keep calling them meets like swimming. So, you know, we want to continue to have some more discussions about those sort of things. I'm not necessarily sure our goal would be out to stop it, but if it's going to happen, can we be good neighbors and try to work together? And I think long-term, I would, you know, recommend we need to work cooperatively, too, with the fairgrounds. If we lean on them to borrow parking or maybe host an event or part of an event, you know, we hope they say yes, you know, to us, so trying to, trying to work through it and be reasonable about it is what we're trying to do. Some of the concerns that still linger, you know, drainage. Obviously, they're bermed and mounded, water's gonna go somewhere, so where is it gonna go and what can they do about that? So we're trying to work through that. Next steps for them is probably get a zoning permit approved by Champaign County Planning and Zoning, so that'll be their permit to move forward, so we'll work with them and see how that goes.
So we don't have a sense of the timeline there?
I mean...
They think if they got a permit tomorrow, they might get some races anybody in the summer. They've got a professional BMX building group that's kind of waiting for that process and so this was, I think, part of, part of what needed to happen for us to go and see it firsthand. The footprint, the presence wasn't as extreme as I was worried about. The largest berm that they're looking at was, it was relatively subtle, I mean, and I think I was, I began to think differently when he talked about the importance of getting kids outside and off their Xboxes and, you know, these were a lot of young kids, even have kids out there on pushbikes, we didn't see it that day, but they have it and some older folks as well, so it was, and as Tim mentioned, it was definitely a family sort of environment. It was well-run, yeah. It wasn't too dusty. I mean, considering how windy and dry it's been, it really wasn't, it wasn't too dusty.
Yeah, it was really hot out there.
I bet. What sort of season do they have, so to speak?
April, October.
April, October, early November, they said, depend on the weather.
Uh-huh, okay.
Diverse age group, I think they had little, looked like five-year-olds and then I think they said somebody that competes is sixty in the group, so it's a pretty wide range. It seemed like families that have kids and extended groups.
The guy who built the race course, he, his father, really, he maintains it now. His whole family's gone on to do different sorts of cycling events. One does triathlons, another does mountain biking and he himself has moved into road criteria and so it's sort of an avenue for folks to become like one cyclist, which is certainly speaks to our interests, you know, as far as biking.
So you're not as concerned? Is that what I'm reading, that you're not as concerned about the development over there as we originally were?
Still, the drainage is probably one of our bigger concerns and, you know, when we talk about, concerned about music, they hear us, they say, "We'll work with you as long as that continues to be the case."
You know, for example, the site there, there's really no drainage concerns, it's open fields that lead to the creek, so any, if it's bad, in fact, their site floods when it backs up, when, you know, the area floods in the spring, so getting them to do diligence So getting them to do due diligence on drainage is, we think, necessary. And so I think they're willing to do that. I think they want the park district's support because that'll make the permitting, you know, process, you know, that much easier.
And it'll give them a better operation if they build it with good drainage in the first place, yeah.
Obviously. So, again, it's a seasonal operation, so it's not like it'll be there, you know, I mean, the site will be there, but the activities won't be year-round. So we'll keep reporting on that. We also, then Corky and I went up to Crystal Lake Pool, we had the first outdoor movie up there after the regular pool hours. It was interesting to me because I kept thinking, okay, how many people are gonna come, you know, twenty, thirty? I just thought, you know, it's a movie that's been in the theaters and might be, it's a little bit later. Your little five-year-olds might be ready for bed. And there was, what, three hundred and fifty up there? And it was, I just couldn't believe it. It was unbelievable. Everyone had a great, great time, it was very unique, it was very exciting.
Which way is the projection? I never, I'm not that good at thinking.
Well, that night, it may get moved, but that night it was on the east side of the comp pool.
Uh-huh.
It was a little more room to, you know, spread out on that side, right. Do you have your pool numbers while we're, did you, I thought it'd be a good segue.
Of course, I can, anytime you get good weather, you get good news.
Well, he's looking, obviously, hot dunes are great for pool, pass sales, but very difficult for landscape and construction because they work at opposite.
Yes, so I just got some real quick numbers and our pool pass sales are pretty much the same. I think it was seven hundred and eighty-two last year, and this was a week and a half ago, so it's probably increased. But seven hundred and eighty-two total passes, so individuals, so it could be a family of five, counts as five. So this year, we were at seven eighty-one, so we're right there, about the same ballpark. Total number of patrons up through Sunday in sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, which remember was a good year for us, again, with the weather. We had ten thousand one hundred and forty-three visits to that point, from the Memorial Day to June twelfth. This year, we've had twelve thousand three hundred and fifteen visits. Interesting part is our members have, in two thousand and sixteen, they visited two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine times. And so far this year, they've visited two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two times. So our members are, seem to be utilizing us more this year, so that's good. Revenues, and this is just revenues coming through the pool itself. Sixty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars in two thousand and sixteen. And for two thousand and seventeen, as of Monday, it was eighty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars, so.
And our prices have stayed the same?
Yes. And it doesn't count Monday or today or the rest of the ninety-degree span we're gonna have here, so.
Well, when I go at eleven, which is just, I mean, who's there? Navy eaters are there and toddler swim time, I think are the only ones who are there. That parking lot is more than half-full when I'm there at eleven, which is really, you know, I think I'm just gonna cruise in a...
You're probably seeing some cars at the nature play too, maybe.
No, there was nobody there yesterday.
Nobody that day?
Nope. No, I mean, there were a lot of kids there on, it must have been Friday. But no, there was nobody up there, it was all, I assume it was all pool or ninety percent anyway, yep.
So so far, so good, it's going well.
Last, Wednesday, we took our third athletic and wellness facility tours in more central Illinois area. So we got to see a little different scale of projects, visited Leroy, Champagne Park District, a few of the more local. Did visit the YMCA, obviously, that's more of an upscale facility on the west side of Champagne, very nice. It was really the first time I'd gone through the whole, pretty much the whole building. They do a wonderful job there, so it's very nice. So I think we got a kind of a little bit more local or closer to home feel on that. And I think we'll report back on that at our August study session and be talking more about that. Lastly, wanted to just touch on underrepresented, working with Corky and Sam Smith, who's, works at Cranert. We met about two years ago when we were kind of all just bringing groups together. They have an interest in working with the underserved also. He's developed a kind of a small, very small group of volunteers, but they're gonna hopefully help us, like, do things like get flyers out for some of these pop-up taco events to, you know, really try to penetrate some of the neighborhoods there. So we're looking forward to that. Did get a request today, I think the Lerman Avenue areas, you know, requesting help. Again, Robin Arbider reached out, she doesn't live in the neighborhood any longer, but certainly is connected there, and so we're trying to work on that. LaShonda gave us a good lead on the Chicago Breeze, they offer girls' basketball camps or workshops. So we're gonna see if that might be something that could go forward. Champagne was contacted also, so thank you very much for that, we appreciate that. And then let me see my last note, I think that was, I think that was our last note.
I just had one more thing on the movie theater, the movie idea, which was something, again, that we just thought maybe, we wanted to do it for the pool, but we also are thinking to do it for more of like pop-up shows in different parks as we move forward with the underserved study. One thing we are planning this year is after the Prairie Park Neighborhood Night, we're gonna show a movie there as well that night. So we're, we're working on what the movie is, and then that'll be part of the flyer that gets handed out as well.
And this is equipment that we bought with donation from First Federal?
A thousand dollars was donated from First Federal.
Okay, it was them. So it belongs to us, we're not having to rent the equipment to do this, right?
No, and it is very nice equipment.
That is terrific.
The speakers were like, like this big, and I was like, oh, boy. And then we turned them on, and I think we could have blown everybody out of there, they really had really good sound. It was really theater quality, it was really good.
Great, great.
Very exciting. That's all I had, but can answer questions of that or other topics.
I mean, there was a note here under your report about Uptech recruitment, is that...
Yes, yes, we're actually, thank you, I blended my scripts, things I wrote in the report. We're getting some last-minute interest in a few things, so we're hopeful. We still need to be thinking of people, so if you, any of you have names that you could think of, please forward them to Ellen or I. And we'd be happy to at least get them on a list and make contact. But we have a couple of people that have, I think we just connected, we still need more. But we were getting a little, just a little nervous the other last week early, but please let us know. We, again, I think Ellen and I were talking about it, we think that sort of the full approach of advertising, talking, networking, anywhere we can go, talk to a group, I was at the Sona meeting and encourage people there, you know, to consider it. So we'll take all these, if you have suggestions of groups, whenever, you know, we go to groups, somebody usually makes a pitch for Uptech. So I think part of it, I think from our sort of view is, it's been in place, I think, for almost forty-five years. And so so many people have already served, so those people are off, you know, off the list. And so finding new people that know about us, that would be willing to serve, is, they're out there, we just have to connect. But open any suggestions?
I think bringing the movie back was a great idea. A lot of people have been talking about how they missed it when it was offered at Crystal Lake Park at the hill. So I think that's a great idea that you guys have brought that back. I just have one question, I know there were a few people that were turned away at the event. And I know it was the first movie and, you know, things are being ironed out kinks and how to make it run a little bit more smoother. But there were a couple of people that reached out that recently moved to Urbana. And the residency was a little bit of an issue at the pool. And so I'm not quite sure if they had identification with them or if the identification would show their previous address and they just hadn't had it changed over yet. But how is that being addressed when, when people come to the window?
First, if it's a, you know, issue, we would refund anybody's money, so that, we want satisfied customers. I think we still think there's some need to, you know, differentiate between resident, non-resident. I guess the alternative would be just treated as a special event and, you know, make it, you know, not an issue. There is a fee to get the movie, so we knew that charging something was, you know, a reasonable approach. We do have the resident, non-resident, or resident, non-resident issue in different ways. Also, the same types of situation occasionally crop up.
We didn't do a very good job of advertising that part of it in the movie, when we talked about movies. I mean, obviously, if you look at our pool passes, it tells you, you need to bring ID, you need to bring something that proves you're Urbana Park District resident. So...
I wonder if that's something that you could put at the bottom of your advertisement, like on Facebook or...
Absolutely, and we're going to, we're going to in the future, we just missed that.
Right. I think if we did put it, there's still the propensity to, hey, I'm going to the pool, I don't want to carry stuff, I'll just take some money, you know, and show up. So I, I think we'll do everything we can do to, you know, heads up and try to let people know, but...
It was definitely... They were turned away.
I don't believe anybody was turned away.
They weren't turned away, they were told it would be a non-resident fee.
Okay, right, right, right.
I think they didn't either understand or didn't anticipate. Or if you're, like you stated, if you're truly an Urbana resident, but you don't have the proof, certainly we would give their money back or, you know, make them happy any way we could. I think it continues to point to some of the challenges with resident, non-resident rates. I mean, if you, we'll save the time in this meeting, but certainly it'd be a topic for future discussion. Do we adhere to that in every instance, or are there times you recognize it and don't? What sort of a good policy, is there a way to get away from it? I know in my whole time, we've discussed it six or seven times, you know, everything from, do away with non-resident rates. But it always came back that Urbana residents feel that they're, you know, providing a substantial base and that should some preference be given. So we've leaned and stuck to that side of the equation.
I don't know many people that leave home without ID, but that's just me, but, you know, there are...
I don't, I'm bad at that, I would be one of those people that, I go to the outdoor movie, I'll just show up with some money and then find out, you know, now I'd probably just pay it if I was that mad, I'd, because I know our policy is to, you know, reimburse or if you're unhappy, but I'm not sure there's a perfect way to do it, but...
Yeah, I would definitely say, LaShonda, that it's definitely was our error on not explaining what you need to prove you're resident.
I think it's just trial and error, I mean, it was new, it's, you know...
The pool staff that were doing it, they just, you know, they're used to talking about pool passes, resident, non-resident. And I don't think they, they didn't put that together for the movie thought process. But they're already listed for the summer, there's two more. And Leslie's going to make sure there's social media that goes out about what you need to be a resident. So, to prove that you're a resident of Urbana.
Yeah, because I mean, it's great, I mean, you guys did have a great turnout and, you know, that's probably, it's probably overwhelming because you weren't expecting that many people to show up, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's one of the benefits that is good for Urbana Park District because it's getting more people involved. I mean, families are coming out and they're enjoying family events. And that's something that, you know, many residents have been talking about for a long time, since, you know...
I talked to many people that said, oh, I remember when you used to do it at Crest, because I went to Crestview Park, they had them on that little berm. I know when we moved to the area in eighty-six, they offered them. I had so many people tell me about when we used to offer them, so it was really nice to see it back in place. I think it's something that does resonate with families and individuals.
Absolutely.
You should have seen us fighting with the wind though, with that screen.
I bet.
Crazy.
It's an inflatable screen, yeah, so, and the ground was like rock hard, so.
Right, right.
We had some chat, we were a little, well, to be honest with you, we started late. Because we could just couldn't do, Tim and I were trying to help and Joseph showed up and Joseph helped. Leslie, who's already set it up once, but it wasn't near as windy or...
Trials already, but didn't anticipate the wind.
Oh, it's been fierce.
It's tough, but we pulled it together maybe fifteen, twenty minutes late, maybe, later, but people were in the pool.
It actually made it better though, because it was a little darker and you could really see the movie, so.
Yeah. Even the other little, the little beach party that you guys are getting ready to do is, it has people talking. Like, these are like really unique family fun events that, you know, again, is getting people out and getting people to participate in some of the park programs, so.
This is any indicator of how the rest of Crystal Lake will respond to improvement. I think we're gonna be in fantastic shape, because we're very energized and, you know, it's optimistic.
Totally off the subject, but we had, I've really gotta give it to Leslie and Jennifer because I think the diversity in their staffing is just fabulous. I mean, it is, the whole pool has that feel, that anybody, everybody, you belong. And so, I mean, it was really neat to see, even at the special event, there was all, it was very diverse. Grandpas, little kids.
Grammas.
Grammas. Yeah, I mean, just all, all sorts, all sorts of, all sorts of people, just really quite...
No cats and dogs.
Well, maybe outside the fence, there were a couple outside the fence.
Be one of our future movies, though.
Here's a million-dollar question, do you think you guys will do something for teens?
I would...
I think there was teens there that night.
There were a lot of teens.
I mean, like, we do like a teen night.
Just a teen event?
It's a neat idea.
This summer?
Just curious.
Probably not this summer, but we have, Tim and I have had lots of different groups we've been working to collaborate with, which I could see something coming out of that.
I think it would probably appeal to that group. Good questions.
Well, just to go off of that, the, one of our recent meetings was with the Urbana Free Library and they have the Discovery Room, is that what they called it? And that's teens only, and that, and so we've talked about working with them and seeing what kinds of things we could do.
Awesome.
Going and talking to the kids, so, I'll stop talking.
Any other questions for Tim? Okay, moving on to the president's report, upcoming meetings. Hey, on the Fourth of July, there's no study session, fireworks only. And July eleventh, you're gonna, you're gonna have the great pleasure of doing the executive session to do the semi-annual review of past executive session minutes and recordings.
Yeah, that's why I voted for Bob to replace Chris.
We can do this.
Perfect timing.
And the public hearing on the combined budget appropriation ordinance that we're seeing a piece of here tonight and adopting and approving the budget. And presumably, there may be some bid approvals at that point. I didn't have anything additional to add to that. Moving on to committees and liaison reports, the finance committee, we met last Friday, I think it was, I've got, and discussed some of the things that already have been mentioned here tonight. There was also some discussion about Franklin Street and the property that we've purchased there and the interest in some neighbors and that. But I think we indicated we were, as a committee, not interested in changing the contract that we had made. And we continue to move ahead and make that into parkland, I...
But there was unhappiness, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there was, people wanting to use the house, yes.
Derek and I are meeting Thursday with some of the neighbors, so we'll have a very good dialogue and keep everyone updated.
And had a good bit of discussion about the ITAP engineering thing, which I assume I'm pointing covering here because Derek is, and Kayla aren't gonna be covering that in detail here momentarily. And there was also some discussion of the IDOT project along University Avenue and how that may be impacting Leo Park and what other possibilities there might be around that. I'm not sure, Bobby, is there's anything else you remember that we...
Yeah, the one thing that kind of kept coming up is the idea of the foundation receiving gifts versus the park district receiving gifts. And what's the appropriate blend of that and what's the purpose behind that? And does that fit into our budget? Does it fit in for the foundation to collect money for that purpose? Or is that too small of a fund for them to create a new account for? So just sort of some creative thinking about how we approach that, set up some policies or protocol of how we actually do it.
And then there's specifically about the green bequest, as to whether we would actually place that with the Parks Foundation where they have a bit more flexible rules in how they invest things and might be able to generate a little more income from it. I have been assured by Matt Dearing that it's perfectly legal for us to do so. That there's no problem with that so long as it's clearly stated. That there's no problem with that, so long as it's clearly stated where the money came from and where it's going and that it's, uh, reasonable records are kept at the other end for doing that. I think that covers pretty well. What was at the Finance Committee? Is, is there any Policy Committee report?
Um, we met just before the executive session today. Mostly, we were, we, uh, I think the bulk of what we did was actually just review and listen to updates of, uh, procedures, administrative procedures related to the audit findings that don't necessarily need board approval, but they were, staff was keeping us up to date. There is one policy update related to overtime compensation that will be coming forward either in July. Or August for us to review. It's just a tweak to the current, um, system, current, currently what we have, so. Um, and then we talked about other policies, uh, that staff are working on in the pipeline, so.
Uh, moving on to Urbana Parks Foundation representative, we currently don't have that position filled, although actually both LaShonda and I were, were at the meeting on Monday. And, you know, things are pretty actively moving ahead, uh, with their, trying to recruit additional members to the Parks Foundation Board. And there was an extensive discussion about the, the annual dinner and the pluses and minuses in relationship to that. I, I think the dinner felled a little bit short of breaking even, uh, when you add up all the donations versus what the expenses were. There was quite a bit of discussion about whether the, the country club venue, uh, landed itself well to, uh, the social mixing before the actual sit-down to the dinner, that too many people were just immediately sitting down and made it a little difficult for those who were trying to circulate around and make contact with the various attendees, a little more difficult. So some, probably some planning that they're gonna be worrying on that. And I, I had to leave the, the meeting before it was over. I don't know if there's anything additional, LaShonda, that may be you.
Um, other than the website, so they're gonna be sending out a link to foundation members to take a look at before they actually launch the new website. So that's gonna be forthcoming. I do wanna talk about, a little bit about the board representation for the foundation, if we can spend a few minutes on that. I am interested in representing our board for, uh, the foundation, so I'm not sure how you have to proceed from here, but.
On the agenda later.
It's on the agenda later, okay. Never mind then.
Just in case that happens. We have a spot.
So, um, not to, just to step back, was the, um, do we have fewer attendance at this year's meeting than in previous years? Why was there, was there, yeah, at the dinner, was, why was there a shortfall in the? Was there a discussion about that?
We didn't really go into detail. I think we can get the numbers and we can look at that. I'm not sure if the venue or some of the cost were higher. We have talked about increasing the cost, you know, the, the price, you know, to get closer to. Taking a half step back, most of these type of things generally don't generate a profit unless you're doing all of your fundraising, you know, right at the table, like Prairie Rivers. That's, you're there and that's when you make your, your donation, most people do. I think we can get more information on that as far as cost breakdown, income versus expenses.
I just didn't think it was that way last year, and so I'm curious to know. It seemed to be very much a very similar setup. We didn't even pay for musicians this year, so I was just, seems odd that we lost money, because I thought last year, uh, that they lost money. The goal of increasing the price for the first time was to have a, to cover the costs, so.
We should do a comparison of, you know, look at each year, income, expenses, and see if we see a trend or a pattern or, you know, what, what does that cause?
Yeah, as a percentage, the shortfall was not huge, but it was noticeable.
Maybe people drank more alcohol this year.
Well, I also wonder, um, this year, there was more of an idea of, of having a campaign. So people may have contributed less to the dinner and more to the campaign.
I'll ask if we can work, look at that and do some sort of eval, eval and come back on the whys and the whats.
Okay, moving on to UPDEC planning, was there anything from that committee to report to see?
Not now.
Okay, moving on to old business, uh, receive a draft ordinance, two thousand seventeen oh seven to adopt the fiscal year seventeen eighteen combined budget appropriation ordinance. Not any actual board action required for this, but are you gonna run us through this a little bit?
I'll walk you through a little bit. So this is the official document that, um, it's the draft version of the official document that the board will approve in July, uh, that will assign the appropriations to the Park District. That's our legal authority to spend money. So, uh, this is based on the individual departmental budgets, and it's in a summarized form. And then there's a contingency added in the major funds for additional spending. Uh, for example, if you received a grant or something, you wouldn't have the authority to spend it if you didn't appropriate that spending. So there's always some wiggle room that you apply, uh, to your major funds, so that you can continue to spend beyond your operating budget. So the appropriations that are in this budget in the summarized format of the different categories are basically the same information that you received in the preliminary budget that was distributed in April, except that salaries have been finalized and any other last-minute, uh, types of changes that we've worked through with Corky and Derek have been presented. But that summary information that I provided at the April study session of the major changes are all still in place. So nothing major has changed since that meeting. And, um, so if you have any questions, any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but, uh, you'll receive the full budget book at the July meeting. It'll go out with your board packets that will, uh, have this appropriation information in it as well. We put that together at the end of June, and that goes out in July.
Any questions for Katie on that? Okay, next item on our agenda, should we choose to do so, action to appoint Urbana Parks Foundation representative. And, um, so LaShonda, you said, uh, you were expressing some interest?
Yes.
Great.
Well, I move to appoint. Commissioner LaShonda Cunningham to be the Urbana Parks Foundation representative for the twenty seventeen eighteen fiscal year.
And I strongly second.
And I strongly third that.
Okay, well, we, we have the, the nomination both moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the point? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that carries unanimously, and, uh, thank you very much, LaShonda, for, for being willing to take on that task. And, uh, I, I hope you get real satisfaction out of it.
I always have you all the weight on.
I heard some very positive comments from a foundation board member about your presence there, so.
Already?
Yeah. Oh, he was glad to see you there.
Okay, uh, there was no old business removed from the consent agenda, so we're on to new business. Extraordinance two thousand seventeen zero six, annexing property to the Urbana Park District. And it's not a lot of property, but hey.
No, I was surprised how little it was.
One we have, as you know, it's an annual activity we do, and we do have one.
So. Do we have to do anything?
Yeah, can I just move to approve ordinance two thousand seventeen dash oh six to annex certain territory to the Urbana Park District?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Uh, this should require a roll call vote, it's suggested, so starting with LaShonda.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And next.
So this is, the north end of this property is the trail, is it not?
It is, yeah.
I saw this got sold not long ago, and I was thinking, well, there is possible opportunity for somebody. I'm very curious who bought it. Actually trying to look it up right now.
Okay, moving on to action to approve an amendment, amendment number one to an IGA with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the rain garden construction.
Do we, CUSR, I think on B?
Oops, I did, absolutely. Good grief, I'm skipping down too fast. Thank you for correcting me. Uh, we have the resolution two thousand seventeen zero nine to accept the fiscal year seventeen eighteen CUSR budget.
Jessica DeYoung was planning on being here, but she was unable to, and Corky said he would give us an update on the budget draft.
Just a couple small changes. One, uh, I wanna explain the report a little bit, because it's not typically the way we, we see it. The first column, it says budget seventeen eighteen, and then it has appropriations twenty, in the, in the next column. It's really the, the budget is, is the right col, the right column, the appropriations column. Just like when recreation staff do budgets for, for us, they'll put together their formulas and their numbers and days and, and figure out all the costs. And then we round them. Where this budget line, it must have been special rec staff numbers, and then once the budget process goes through, there's some adjustments based on, um, you know, the, Jamil may have made a few adjustments based on the fact that the history of what's been being spent, um, so that, that's the difference in the numbers, but the budget's really the, the right-hand column. Really, the, the major, nothing really major, but some of the lines that are growing is the part-time staffing line. Um, a lot of that is due to our inclusion aid process. We're, we're really getting a lot of, um, we're using a lot of inclusion aids, both here and in Champagne, which is a good thing, because that's helping get, um, them services out to where, um, those individuals can participate in, in our regular programming rather than having to use CUSR programming on its own.
How many, do you have a sense of how many we have at camp?
It changes every week. Typically, uh, yeah, cause they're at different camps. Typically, this time of year, we're anywhere between eight to twelve.
I think we said eleven, I think at our last meeting. Corky's right, it changes as soon as somebody calls up.
Yeah, so.
And it's only likely to go up, correct?
It's more likely to go up than go, once the summer starts, that group of people pretty much stay in the programs. It's more to get new ones as we move forward. The only other thing that, uh, memberships and dues, um, is a little bit higher and conference travel. Jessica's got a certification she needs to go and, and renew, and I think it involves a day class as well with that, which is above and beyond what she typically does, and then one of the other staff members has a conference that they're gonna go to. So really, from, from the budget standpoint, I don't have a whole lot. Obviously, I wasn't completely prepared for her not to show, but she is not feeling well, so, um, I think the main thing I'd like to point out while we're talking special rec is, um, we're working through the strategic plan that we put together. Jessica and her staff actually have done quite a bit on, on the small hanging fruit items. But we, one thing that we really need to look at, um, for special rec, we've heard it several times in the last two months from participants, uh, or parents of participants as well, um, this, this need for space for special rec. We had some discussion at our special rec meeting, um, you know, typically in, you know, not that we're not thinking of them, but typically in our planning processes that we do, planning process they, they'd use in Champagne, special rec's never really up there on the top, what kind of space do they need? You know, we, we're using a facility for summer camp and after-school camp, um, that, you know, is like a shed. And it, it's not very appropriate for the, for the use that's happening there, but it's the space that we have. We've talked about, um, you know, what more can we do with Phillips, looking at the James Room and see, when we're looking at concepts for that. As we continue to look at facilities on these facility tours, we're seeing places that have special rec rooms, special rec times for gym. You know, so as Champagne Park District looks to do things, they're, I mean, they're looking at another facility over near Human Kinetics. You know, really making sure that they're thinking about, it, it is a strategic planning goal, um, to really evaluate the space needs and, and see what we can to, do to help alleviate some of the, um, confinement issues that, that are happening there.
A sense of what their daily, uh, population would be and, and, you know, people they would be dealing with on a, on a daily basis? You know, just roundabout, I mean, is it twenty, is it fifty, is it?
Time I visited the Spalding last summer, went over to drop things off, just average day, probably a room the size of this, there are probably fifty children and adults. Yeah, inside, plus a few staff involved, or summer staff.
That's bumped up for summer.
That's bumped up for summer.
For the regular year.
I wouldn't say it would change a whole lot through the course of the day, because they have different programs that go on. They do after-school after that. We have, uh, schools-out days and things like that, where we have aides. They as well, in Champagne, have those specific days and after-school programming. So, um, the early childhood programs that we've been doing at the early childhood education building, when we started that two years ago, I mean, that's really boosted up the number of aides that we're using as well. So, I mean, I think fifty's probably a good number to think on, on a regular, about any.
More than I was, I was assuming. That's, I mean, that's great, but more than I had.
Well, and at the same time, they're just a piece, a little space of each building that they go and use most of the time, so it's, uh, if, if we ever want to be more for that population, we really need to decide, you know, what are we gonna do from a space standpoint?
Right, right.
I'd highly recommend both districts consider including it in any future building expansions, because it's desperately needed. I think the Hayes facility is inadequate and the Spalding is definitely not.
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually, I think, worse. I, I wanna be careful. I don't wanna criticize another district's facilities. We could equally look at our side and, you know, determine that our spaces wouldn't be ideal, but I think it's growing and I think that, it's like any population, the specific needs and the age ranges probably needs separating out. So children are with more children aged and adults are with adult. Right now, they're grouped together for the most part in the summer.
Well, you know, we had, we had that brief time when, when, um, they were in Lincoln Square. Are there any commercial buildings like that, that, that are, I mean, and that seemed to be, we always thought that was such a good place, because it was right on the bus line. There was, you know, there, it was a, a, at least for Urbana, certainly a central location and easy for people to get to. Other, other, should we be contemplating?
Well, here's a train of thought on that. Um, they have an advisory committee. They've cut, kind of followed how we put together UPDEC. And one of the things they're hearing, because they're, they're starting the conversations with, with, uh, on the facilities. And what they're hearing from everybody, and these are, um, either parents or, um, another agency that deals with, with disabilities, um, a representative of those agencies, and they're not saying have your own building. They're saying.
Integrate.
Integration and, and.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, which I think, I mean, that's a good idea.
So I, I think the, the problem with, because, you know, there was a discussion at one time about the old Leonard. And, and does that become, you know, the hub? And, you know, that, that's totally going against really what we're trying to do as far as integrating everyone together.
Right, right.
Well, I think the limitation of the Lincoln Square was that was their financial, or their offices, it wasn't a programming space.
More of a home base, right, and then they were mobile.
Yeah, I, I, and I was thinking of that more as a, as an example of someplace, if there was some commercial space, if there was, if that was something that would be considered rather than having to build.
I think there's a possibility of you could. I think there's a possibility of you could have a space like that that maybe took care of office space but also had some program space.
Right, right, because I think.
But it didn't become the place where every special recreation program was held.
Right, yeah.
I think there's, they're thinking.
The Brookins Building and replacing the gym or expanding that gym or whatever, it's important that we keep special rec in mind with that.
But again, I think it's also very important not to think about, well, it's just in Urbana because what's, Champaign needs to do something as well so that, you know, we're getting the balance between, people aren't just coming to a facility for special needs items.
Right, right, that it's all part.
It's integrated, regular programming.
Right, I think there's opportunity for both districts to work together to make that happen. And I think there are obviously opportunities, we're looking at all of our spaces and Champaign's going to be expanding too, so it could be a good opportunity. Of course, they need it this week, but like everything, we'll have to wait and work through the process.
Yeah, yeah. Katie, I wanted to ask your opinion about, on the second page, about the credit card fees. Is that, I mean, do we pay similar kinds of amounts for, how are the fees levied? Why are there, I mean, is this like P-card kinds of things? Is that?
No, the registration processing.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, we pay them to active net, so Champaign Park District has their own credit card processor, so, you know, it's like 3%.
Okay, so this is what that, this is what that money is.
Actually fairly cheap compared to what we pay.
Okay, good, okay.
Yeah, so they're probably allocating, you know, at the Champaign Park District level, they're probably doing an allocation to program registrations related to CUSR and charging it to this budget.
Good, that's fine.
So I don't think it's unreasonable.
Or could even be just a portion of the fee.
Okay.
Cost to get paid.
Yep, I got it, that makes sense. Thanks.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions on the budget?
Well, I move to approve resolution 2017-09 to accept the FY 2017-2018 CUSR budget with, yeah.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Again, we should do a roll call vote on this, let's start at the right.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. Moving on then now to approving an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the IDNR.
Planning staff has an amendment that they want to talk about.
So this is fairly straightforward, that for the dispersment that we received from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to fund the bio soil project, the agreement was to have that spent within a certain amount of time. However, state budget impasses meant that we didn't receive that money until much later than had been anticipated, and so our agreement on those funds is about to run out on June 30th. Because of the understanding that things have been more complicated than anticipated, IDNR has provided an intergovernmental, an amendment to our intergovernmental agreement extending the amount of time that we have to spend that money to June 30th, 2018, which handily covers our maintenance agreement that we currently have under contract with NCAP, which runs through the end of October. So we believe that this is going to solve the dispersment and budgeting issues and it just amends the spending date.
I just have one comment, you might remember last year, we kind of had a similar situation and we actually had to return the unspent funds from a small grant that we had received from IDNR because we came up against the deadline for having to need to spend the money, but we didn't have the process going enough because we didn't have any of the other money for this particular project. And so, I don't know.
That was the actual design of these rain gardens. It was different there, but what IDNR agreed to was, was bill us after you spend those funds and we'll reimburse you.
So this is avoiding that kind of runaround in which we just get to keep the money and not have to return it and then get reimbursed for it again.
It seems too sensible for state government, but I move approval of the amendment one to the intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the rain garden construction, education, and monitoring project. Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call starting at the left this time.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. And we're moving on to the mower bids.
I think Planning and Operations has definitely the next two items, go right ahead.
We do, we're in a little block here. So, within our fleet, we keep two 72-inch mowers currently, and those mowers obviously mow grass in the summers and in the winters, they actually have a cab unit that goes onto them that encloses it in heats to go do snow removal on sidewalks and in parking lots. And so, so they're very useful machines, we're finding that our mowers tend to have about a six to seven-year lifespan. You know, they get used a lot, we put them through a lot in the parks and at about that seven-year mark, they start needing a lot of maintenance and better to invest in new ones at that point. So we did a bid for two new 72-inch mowers and John Deere, we bid specified to match a John Deere product because that's what we have for all of our mowers, they have interchangeable parts, so you've seen the wide area mower bids come through and those are John Deere and so having these be John Deere is convenient for our mechanical operations. We, you may also remember that with our wide area mowers, we've had some issues where we've only gotten one bid the last couple of times that we've bid out because there's a little bit of a monopoly in the area, in Champaign County at least, on who sells these John Deere pieces of equipment and people, other companies have not wanted to overbid that and compete with another John Deere dealer, basically. But we were very lucky, we were surprised this year to receive two bids, one from Aaron's Brothers in Urbana and the other from Aaron's and Sons in Gibson City. And my impression from the Gibson City, they're both Aaron's still, but my impression from the group in Gibson City.
Family feud kind of thing.
Yeah, my impression from the group in Gibson City is that they haven't really done a lot of bidding, actually, and Corky this morning suggested that they, which isn't a bad thing, it's Corky suggested that, you know, they've mostly been working with farmers. And, but they're within our mileage range for service agreements and so we were happy to accept a bid from them and especially because the bid pricing came in incredibly favorably from Aaron's and Sons. And I spent a lot of time, you know, fact-checking and truthing their bid and feel very comfortable with the product that they're going to be giving us, which is these 72-inch John Deere mowers with heavy-duty 60-inch brooms to do snow sweeping and cab attachment. We did save some money, we'd gotten a quote originally that, for the cab, that would come installed already. And our mechanical crew and our mowing crew is confident that they can do the installations and it actually saved about $8,000 to bid it without the installation. So that's some of the brilliance of our in-house staff and their capabilities. But, you know, we're very pleased between this and some incredibly favorable bids on previous vehicles and equipment that we bid for the 2017 budget, we have come in about $30,000 under budget on the entire vehicles and equipment line, so we were, it's pretty astonishing.
That's one mower.
Huh?
That's one mower.
It's one mower, yeah, exactly, or another truck. But we're going to be prudent and save that into either vehicles contingency for next year or general contingency for the capital budget overall. So we have two mowers up for your consideration.
And the intention is to take their trade-in offer this time?
Yes, so that's a good point, we did research the trade-ins the same way that we've been doing, that we've had, you know, some really good success on those auctions recently. And when Denny came back to me with what he's found for 72-inch mowers of this sort, they were exactly right in line, so it was like $7,000 on auction time and the offer here was 6,500 and that's not worth staff time to stress about the difference, so we're happy to accept the trade-in on these.
Well, I move to award the low bid of $53,925 for two 72-inch commercial front mowers with options to Aaron's and Sons of Gibson City, Illinois.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Do a roll call starting at the right this time?
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. Now, on to approval of an engineering contract, or are we not?
We are.
We are.
Well, we're presenting an engineering contract tonight, we are actually presenting it. So, okay, so bear with me, there's a bit of a story here. So we've received this ITEP grant, we're successful applicants with the help of the Regional Planning Commission. And we have come to understand very quickly that ITEP and working with state and federal programs together and especially in the state of Illinois, which recently implemented a new grant oversight program, the GADA, that you have to go through, which you guys actually have passed several resolutions regarding, we, there are a lot of bureaucratic challenges to having a grant like this and we haven't had one in a while. So one of those challenges was figuring out exactly what we needed to do for engineering services and last month, we actually had an updated release of engineering funds from IDOT because there had been some miscommunications about what exactly the scope of our project was, specifically that we want to do the Phase 1 engineering for the Broadway Avenue stretch as well, so that we know how the paths intersect. From that, we had the option of just selecting our own engineering firm if we had done that and gotten an approval completed by June 30th, or June 22nd of this year, which actually we're luckily within that boundary. However, we made the decision internally that we did not know a lot about ITEP grants, we know that they are challenging and that we wanted to make sure that we were selecting the best firm for our interests and to administer this grant money with us. So we initiated a request for qualifications process, we had responses from five firms and interviewed four of them. And through that qualifications-based selection process, we selected Fairgram Engineering and Environmental Services located in Champaign, Illinois. They have a lot of experience with ITEP grants and also just a wealth of knowledge about the area. You know, when we interviewed them and we were talking about, you know, what aesthetic do we really want for this new Park Street path, is this just going to be clay and concrete or, you know, what's it going to look like? You know, we were able to say, well, we want it to look a lot like the Broadway stretch that we installed and they all went, oh, yeah, yeah, we know exactly what that looks like. And that's a really valuable level of knowledge to bring to a project like this. So they, as you can see, we just passed around their scope of services and their fee proposal that just came in a couple of hours ago because we did not, we did not give them much time. We only gave them about a week to work through this with us and they were very gracious in helping and getting things to us literally exactly on time, so we're happy about that. What this is approving tonight is the exact scope of services that we were released by IDOT to pursue. And so that is $90,000 worth of Phase 1 engineering and Phase 2 engineering for this path project. And Phase 1 does a lot of the environmental surveys, it does, you know, soil sampling if you need to, it looks at the Endangered Species Act, it looks at.
Cultural.
Cultural, cultural resources, it conducts public open houses and feedback forums if you need them, and then creates this project development report that is submitted to IDOT and the federal government for review and approval. And then Phase 2, once Phase 1 has been approved, Phase 2 moves into what is the actual construction of this path going to look like? So, or the details, the bid specifications for the path. So that's what Fairgram has given us exactly, is a $90,000 proposal for those two aspects of the project. Oh, and I should mention, the Phase 1 also covers the Broadway Avenue stretch, as I indicated before. So one of the concerns, though, is that the state did not release us to, release the money for us to complete the surveying that's required for Phase 1 engineering, and that's a little bit of an oversight and a miscommunication on the budgets. There were two different budgets that were submitted through our grant and so we think that they made this agreement based off of one of them that didn't call out the surveying specifically. Another budget did call out the surveying specifically, so we know that it's budgeted within the full $537,000 grant amount, it's in there, it just wasn't called out. So we need to go back and talk to them about getting that approved probably separately, but Fairgram has let us know that that will be an additional $17,000 on top of this $90,000. And what we would like to ask the board to do tonight is approve the $90,000 contract with 10% contingency of an additional $9,000 and pending IDOT approval, the survey sum of $17,000. And I can repeat that again for anybody who needs to hear it twice.
One little clarification, we should also probably also say, approving the $90,000 pending IDOT approval, because they want to review that as well.
Oh, yes, they do.
So 90 plus, 17 plus?
Nine.
Nine, okay, well, 10%, right?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But 10% of 90.
10% of 90.
And not 10% of the 17,000 as well.
I think it'd be a good idea to include 10% there as well.
Yeah, probably.
Derek, talk to me about contingencies, I definitely would recommend because, you know, we're working with IDOT and a site that we don't know as well either, we don't have a lot of history working projects there.
And to be clear, both sums should be pending IDOT approval.
So then really it's 107.
I would keep them separate, though.
Okay, okay.
We're authorized at this point for 90.
All right, we know this one's a little complicated.
I think just, I should mention too, you know, the alternative was to wait, put it back a month, we really want to get moving on this project, so typically, we wouldn't bring things to you all like this, but we thought it's pretty critical to get it moving, so.
So the advantage of the Broadway being in this is that, time-wise, but we're not getting any funds for the Broadway piece.
The construction.
So that's not necessarily tied to this grant, that we could go ahead and do that, but we still have to do engineering.
We aren't getting funds for the Phase 1 engineering of it.
Right.
Okay, all right.
So, you know.
But not for the construction, right?
Right, but we're thinking strategically, if they funded the engineering, you know, another application hopefully would support the construction because you're halfway there.
We also knew that the construction of the Broadway path would, the Broadway portion of the path would weaken our application, it has a lot of variances. So this, when you're creating a multi-use path, you need things to be fairly strictly aligned, you know, things need to be 10 feet off of the road, that you need to have seven feet of clearance on the other side of it and it needs to be a 10-foot path. That's 27 feet that you are required to work within when you're laying down one of these paths, there is not 27 feet of space on Broadway right now. And so, like I said, we would have had to go through a lot of, you know, changes or variances, but with getting the Phase 1 completed right now, we can know how we're going to overcome them and submit future applications for that project.
That's a good idea. So you want two motions then, one for 90 plus a contingency of 9,000 and then one for 17,000 plus 1,700?
Both pending IDOT approval.
Pending IDOT approval.
Yes.
And I think one other thing I'd add to this is that this is one block from that dangerous university-Broadway intersection, so it could be very important to keep the traffic going safely, once we fix that intersection.
All right, I'll do the first one. I move that we award the Lake Crystal, sorry, Crystal Lake Park Shared Use Path, somebody wanted to, Use Path Construction Engineering to Fairgram of Champaign, Illinois in the amount of $90,000 with a contingency of $9,000.
Pending IDOT approval.
Pending IDOT approval, thank you.
Second.
All right.
That's moved and seconded, any further discussion? Let's do a roll call then, starting with the left.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. And so is there a motion to approve the surveying charges?
I move to approve surveying charges to the Fairgram of Champaign, Illinois in the amount of $17,000 with a contingency of $1,700.
Pending IDOT.
Pending IDOT approval.
Thank you.
It's always easier to do from the other side.
Even though I wrote it down.
Me too. I'll second it.
I did hear a second.
I think this isn't very hard.
Bob, Bob, Bob seconded.
I think Bob seconded.
Bob seconded. Okay, I thought, yeah, okay.
Nurtling around over here.
So it's been moved by Mayor and seconded by Bob. Is there any further discussion on this one? And let's do a roll call, starting with Bob.
Aye.
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 Okay, that carries unanimously as well.
You know, people watching this must want to bother us.
And that
Sometimes it's
brings us, brings to custodial services.
Yeah, this is really interesting.
For some time, uh, we've been looking at custodial services. One, one of the things that we've been interested in is the concept of a umbrella group, a group of, uh, custodial staff that could, uh, work across the agency in different facilities. And we assembled a, a large staff to look at it. Uh, as we looked at it in more detail, we felt like Quaddix Custodial should still be its own separate entity. It's really very specialized work, and they also do some things like water testing and filter basket changes that are important to, to, to just keep in a, in a position that's dedicated and trained and does that regularly. And so, uh, our plan, uh, was to look at two full-time staff, uh, that would work overnight hours at Philip's Recreation Center, uh, Need a First Nature Center. And for the first time, uh, the Brookins Gymnasium, which has been without true custodial services for as long as we've been there.
Deborah, please.
Management staff been, you know, doing cleaning toilets and, you know, pushing the room and things like that. Uh, and, and we budgeted for that. Uh, that, about that time, we were doing our facility tours, and in each facility tour, uh, we would ask them,
Yep.
uh, you know, how, how do you all structure your janitorial services? And we heard that almost, that, that most of them, uh, had, had overnight contractual services. And then during the day, they would have people come through, either part-time staff or full-time staff, that would just sort of touch the facility and make sure it stays clean, stock toilet paper, uh, you know, cleanup spills and things like that. And, uh, we began to, to think, well, maybe we should rethink this. About that same time as well, we began having some concerns about some of our overnight staff, uh, that were performing custodial work about, um, you know, were we supervising adequately? Were we, were we able to make sure they're reporting to duty when they're supposed to be? Uh, it's been a position that over the last 10, 15 years, we've had some challenges with. And so we, we thought, this is an opportunity to, to, to think differently about this. And we brought in, um, Upkeep, uh, who was doing work for the city of Urbana, uh, to talk with them a little bit more. Uh, I also talked to other custodial service companies in town, ESS and ServiceMaster. Uh, ESS does the school district, ServiceMaster does Champagne Park District, and, uh, got a better sense of, of how they operate. Uh, and I think, you know, we, we became convinced that this is, this is the direction we should, we should head in. Uh, we've had some less positive experiences with custodial in the past when we've tried to have them quickly fill in somewhere, uh, where somebody got injured. Uh, we had to avoid, uh, we asked them to, to clean during facility occupied hours. We asked them to be building attendance. That, that's not their strength. But when, given the opportunity to come in after hours with a, with a, a group of people that they've trained for that facility, uh, their customers are very happy. And that was evidenced by the, the reference checks we performed. So we moved forward with bidding it. Uh, the bid results are before you here. They are honestly just a tad higher than we had, had anticipated. Uh, part of that's because we have such limited hours that, that we can facilitate cleaning.
Oh, sure, of course, yeah, yeah.
With that comes a higher cost. What we were told is that the, the, the kind of mi- minimum wage for custodial cleaning in our area is about $13 an hour, which is, of course, more than minimum wage. But that's what they find they have to pay just to have people come to work on a regular basis that we can depend upon, uh, that will, will stay with them long-term. And so, um, these numbers are, I think, are a little bit higher than that. Um, but, but that's not different than what we pay. And when you factor on our benefits, which are considerable, we think this is the way to go, and it also avoids some of the, the concerns we've had in the past. So.
And if you don't like it, we don't have to keep doing it.
Exactly. It's, it's a good opportunity for us to try something. If it doesn't work, we can certainly move back to the venue in the past. So it's our recommendation, uh, that you all approve the base bid, uh, to ESS in the amount of 61,800. And as a modification, I, I think I would suggest that we also add a 10% contingency. Um, I know that there's been some talk about maybe extending some hours, you know, weekends at some of our facilities. That would require some additional cleaning, and that would, that, that would allow us to, to pick that up if we needed to. And so our recommendation would be, uh, ESS for 61,800 plus an additional contingency of, uh, 6,180. Is that right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, 6,180. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I drive by them every time I come in. It's nice to have an Urbana firm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd be glad, glad for that.
I will mention that this would, this would allow, you know, we would have a residual of what we budgeted of 37,254. We think that along with some additional money that Recreation has budgeted, uh, that would be enough to hire someone full-time for the balance the rest of the season. Next year, we'd be reevaluating all this. Uh, we think that we may be re-scoping some of our custodial services because it's a little bit more tight. And we certainly have an opportunity to further evaluate the, the full-time staff position, which we think will be, uh, working during the afternoon hours, uh, with some overlap with Della. Uh, Della would act as sort of a coordinator for custodial work and also help to make sure that the work that ESS performs is to standard.
If, if everything goes great like we think it will, then we do have the option for two more years at the same price.
Oh, wow.
After the first year, so.
I move we award the base bid of $61,800 for daily and weekly custodial cleaning to ESS. Clean of Urbana with the addition of a $6,180 contingency fee.
Second.
That's been, been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions?
Michael, I just wanted to compliment the whole group. It's been one of the toughest processes we've gone through because it's really difficult to figure it out that it works for everybody at every time slot, every building. So we bought, brought equality as best as we could to try to up the buildings that need it while keeping the better buildings at the same, at least quality we can provide. Team worked together hard. Obviously, it gives chance to try this. I'm sure we'll get some work back and there'll be some, you know, uh, changes or revision or refinement. But just wanna say, they did a great job and really pleased. We'll see how it works out for us, obviously. That's the real proof. But there's no lack of effort to get us to the next couple of squares.
Yeah, it was obviously a little well thought through.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have the motion on the table, uh, starting, roll call, starting at the left.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously, so. And, uh, brings us down to comments from commissioners. Any, any comments? Uh, hearing none, and I think we've exhausted our agenda. I'll declare adjourned.